So it is January twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and I'm called this Lacey City Council meeting. We have a published agenda and don't think there's any changes. So can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in fair that motion signify by saying an eye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries and we have an approved agenda and consent agenda items. Uh, so next up on our agenda is uh under public recognitions and presentations and we're gonna get a Lacey Youth Council report from Ryan Hill. Oh, you know what? I've got the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh my goodness. Can we go back into the pleasure allegiance real quick? I pledge allegiance. Well, thank you for that. There you go. Uh, it says later start time. I'm some of my brain's already gone. That's where it is. I'll blame it on that. Now we'll go to public recognition and presentations and we'll start off with the youth Youth Council report. Let's see, i- is Ryan on? Yep.
Yes. Hi, I'm Ryan Hill and this is my first year on Youth City Council and I'm super excited to be here and be a part of it and be representing them tonight and talk a little bit about what we've been doing recently. Um, it's been a super exciting experience and obviously as much as we would be love or as much as we would love to work with each other in person, we've been, uh, you know, making do with what we've got. So we've been doing some super exciting things. Um, we've been working on our summit coming up in the spring, which will uh be held at the Fun Fair. Um, and was originally supposed to sort of be its own entity, but then ended up merging with the Fun Fair and that's actually been a great opportunity for us as the Fun Fair already draws in so many people. Um, so we're able to really capitalize on that and spread the ideas that we are uh try and put forth, which is really that you know, we want youth involvement in the city of Lacey and we wanna show the youth the opportunities that jobs and internships and volunteer opportunities hold within the city. So we're super excited to tell everybody about that at our summit and uh introduce to a lot of people what the Youth Council is because there's a chance that they may not know what we do. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, it's really good to hear from you and we're excited about what's going on um with the Youth Council and of course the the Fun Fair. I think that's gonna be a great opportunity and I I really uh look forward to seeing the result of that. I know you guys are putting some hard work in for it. You know, it's funny because it was a couple of years ago, we were planning on doing the same thing the very first year the Youth Council was created and then COVID happened and shut it shut everything down. So I will be knocking on wood that we can continue to go forward with with this and um and and getting back to what we were trying to do a couple of years ago, but it's really great to see that you guys going forward and and be able to do this. And so thank you uh for serving the city of Lacey. We really appreciate it and um have a great night.
Yes, I appreciate appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So next up under um public recognitions and presentation is a uh public service award to Irwin. Um, who's been a longtime member on our Parks Board who is uh he's on a a Parks Commission from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one and I'll I'll turn it over to Jen um and to talk a little bit more about it. Good see you, Irwin. Uh, for some reason we can't hear you, Jen. But it doesn't show that you're on mute. Is it working? God love technology. Well, and I don't even have the word in front of me where I would I'd be filling this time with telling me what the word says. There there it goes. There's our distinguished leaders award. Oh, there it goes. That it shows me now take yourself off mute. Maybe I'll maybe you can talk. Ah, no. Okay. Well, Irwin has been uh like I said, on the planning commission since two thousand seventeen and has done a ton of work. Um, and I know you served as the chair um of the of the of the Parks Commission as well. And obviously, uh, all the work that you've been doing uh recent, I mean, there's been so much work that's been done um on Parks Commission. We know we this council knows and um is uh that the public knows that all the work that you guys have been doing with the Great Cuyo Park and Greenway and it's really one of the most exciting things that has come to the city of Lacey uh in a long time. It's gonna be really uh just amazing area and we really appreciate all the all the work you've done on that. And I'm sure Jen has a list of other things that uh you've done. But in the meantime.
Sir Mayor, I I have her script. Can I just read it?
Yes, please.
It won't be the, or when I I apologize, it won't be the same uh not being read by a Jen Burbage, but so hi, I'm Jen Burbage, but I'm Scott Spence. Um, on behalf of the Board of Parks Commissioners and staff, myself, all of our department staff would like to thank Irwin uh Pedalian for four years of service on the park board. Uh, can't believe it's been four years, Irwin. You can't thank you enough for the stepping in when you really needed to. We still really need you, but we understand circumstances change. And we trust you continue to be active participant in the Lacey community. I'll never forget the Lacey Care Survey. You filled out every single field that was required because you do care and you give all your talents or knowledge and your sense of humor. We are going to miss you being on the board. Thank you for your leadership and stepping up as the chair when your colleagues ask you to do so. Irwin was chair when experienced a record attendance at a park board meeting, one hundred plus people in person. Remember that?
Yeah.
Oh, man. Irwin brought his patience and his level-headed reasoning to the table each night. That was much appreciated. Thank you for speaking up when it came to equity, inclusion, and engaging all people in our community. And thank you for speaking up at the important moments of preserving our natural areas and the significant role for parks and environmental resilience for public health and wellness. You'll be missed and feel free to tune in the first one days of each month, each evening of every month. We'll be there and we'll see you there. Thank you again, Irwin.
Wow.
Please, Ward. Well, um, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Appreciate a little bit of time. Uh, thank you, Scott, or Jen, I should say, right, on behalf of Jen. Um, Mayor, thank you and council members. I thank you um as well and and certainly Scott, I I thank you for your leadership and in the department as well too. So um, but it's been my pleasure um to serve as a a park board commissioner and and thank my fellow park board commissioner for for their um tireless um efforts and volunteerism as well too. So it's been great. It's been fun. Um, and and this is one of those things as as being an employee of Metro Parks Tacoma, one of the things that we've been encouraged to do is to be more active in your community and the community and serve your community. And so this was kind of a small, um, my small way of contributing back to the city of Lacey that I grew up in. And and so and and most importantly, I I mean, just thank Jen and her staff uh for for their efforts in in making sure that that the city um has a pretty high quality parks and recreation uh department as well too. And it gave me uh a much better appreciation of of what they do day in, day out. And so it was really my pleasure to serve as a park for commissioner and and certainly I will still be involved because we've got large projects um to work on, like you said, Mayor. And and so I wanna be a part of that still and that's and certainly I have a vested interest because of the time that we spent in in doing the planning stages. So thank you all for taking the time to um to acknowledge um my service, but certainly my service hasn't been is not complete yet. So I will continue to serve um in in some form or another. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, you're gonna be sore sorely missed. You know, so I remember the uh back when we were uh when I was interviewing for you the first time with Jen and myself and we're just like and the interview was done, you're like, we we've got the person who's just, you know, that had had so much to offer Lacey and and we've uh our community has benefited so much from your expertise. So thank you for your service. I know you're you'll continue to be around and uh and we appreciate everything you've done for us. We'll see ya. I'm sure in general, make sure you get your award.
Yeah, we'll coordinate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, uh, still under public recognitions is uh LAC Police Department Accommodation. I'm turning it over to Chief.
Uh, good morning, actually. Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. Uh, hopefully you can hear me. Yes?
Yep, can hear you. It's been that type of day. So good morning, good evening.
It's been a very long day, I have to say, but hey, it's good to see you all. Um, so today we're here to honor uh really the fruits of your labor and your hard work and the vision of the city manager. The work by our Community Resource Unit to uh help the homeless and most vulnerable of our of our population as well as the Mobile Outreach Team. And so uh as they are all very busy as well, we recorded this for you. Um, so I'm gonna play that recording for you. I can share my screen. And I'm gonna play a video for you. I hope this goes well. Oh, we can't hear.
I can't hear sound.
Yeah.
When you share, there's a button that you can select that says share sound of the video. You might need to reshare and click that box.
Oh, you're on. Okay, you said share. Share sound. Aha, thank you for helping. Okay. Is that one again? All right, I'll try this more time. Thank you for the uh the tutorial, by the way. Very much.
Robin with assistance.
All right. Good evening. We're here to uh give a chief's commendation to the members of the Mobile Outreach Team and the Community Resource Unit. And with us today is Officer Justin Beltran, Officer Jimmy Williams, Department Assistant Lindsay Palmer, uh Certified Peer Counselor Rebecca Adams, along with Certified Peer Counselor Seth Up Beckham, and was also going to include Crisis Clinician Jonathan Hugh Lynn and Crisis Clinician Jamie Turner. And the office, our chief's commendation reads as follows. Officers Justin Beltran and Jimmy Williams have been working in the Community Resource Unit assisted by Department Assistant Lindsay Palmer for the past year. The unit was joined by four members of the Mobile Outreach Team, also known as MOT, in twenty twenty-one, opening a new chapter in the unit's mission to provide services to and reduce law enforcement involvement with the homeless. The results CRU has produced in twenty twenty-one are nothing short of amazing. At the start of the year, Lacey had seventy-four documented homeless people in camps located on properties owned by the state of Washington. By the end of the year, that number had been reduced to seventeen. A seventy-seven percent reduction. This does not happen on its own. Constant monitoring by the by the Community Resource Unit not only kept new campers from establishing illegal residents in Lacey, but by offering services and establishing rapport, CRU is able to connect many people with resources that allowed them to leave homeless camps for better living circumstances and improved outcomes. The additional resources MOT has brought to this unit since October have been invaluable. MOT has responded to literally hundreds of calls since they began services in Lacey, providing outreach services, including food, shelter, clothing, and transportation. MOT members are now self-dispatched to assist those in need as well as responding to requests for services from officers working in the street. To say MOT has had a positive addition and has been a positive addition to the Lacey Police Department and to the city of Lacey would be an incredible understatement. In twenty twenty-one, Department Assistant Lindsay Palmer was instrumental to increase in increasing participation and interest in the department's social media accounts. The department's Facebook page now has over fourteen thousand followers and his Twitter account has nearly nine thousand followers. Lindsay has also maintained records of the CRU contacts and when they help connect people to the to services. This effectiveness and the effectiveness of this unit is largely due to Lindsay's organizational skills. As the Chief of Police, I would like to formally commend the Community Resource Unit for their actions in twenty twenty-one as well as the members as all the members frequently arose above and beyond the call of duty to demonstrate and embody the mission, vision, and values of the Lacey Police Department. So thank you all and very well done. I commend you for your service and thank you for all you do for the city of Lacey.
Okay, hopefully. That's very, very well deserved. And you're right, the 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 Mobile Outreach Team, the the Community Resource Unit has been just really instrumental in 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 changing the lives of of some people who have been in a desperate situation and uh connecting them with services. It's been it's been great to to see that work being done and it needs to continue to be, you know, it's it's a it's always constant, but um, I really appreciate the fact that you have um recognized uh this, you know, these officers and this team, they've just are doing an outstanding job. So um he's passed along from the city council our our admiration and respect to them as well, um, because they're they're doing an outstanding job.
Well, again, I I just have to say thank you to the council and and to the city manager. Um, this doesn't happen on its own. You guys put the resources into this. You guys had the vision. Um, we just put it the that mission in into action. And with between the Community Resource Unit, Mobile Outreach Team, and now Rapid Response Team as well, uh, we really have um presented a a positive view of Lacey, really helped a lot of folks, got some improved outcomes at it and are really making a a really viable model of how to really react and respond to homelessness and really help some folks along the way. So thank you.
Really appreciate it. Thank you, Chief. So uh next up on our agenda, um, and it's interesting, I just uh, you know, on Facebook, your memories show up and I just had a memory show up from the years past where we have the Lacey Loves to Read bookmark winners. And here we are again. It's pretty sad that we're, of course, we're not in person. We don't see all the all the winners in person like we have in years past, but I'm gonna turn this over to Jeanette and she can uh um talk about a little bit more.
Hello there. We're having um our winners hop on here. So I'll give them just a second to join our our meeting. All right, I'm gonna share my screen. You guys, can you see that okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. I'm really trying hard not to have technical difficulties. So we'll see how it goes. Um, so I'm Jeanette Seeler. I'm with Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation and joining me tonight is Karen Johnson from the North Thurston School District. And she is also the head of our Lacey Loves to Read Committee. I also want to welcome our grand prize winners and their families who are joining us tonight. And you are invited to turn your cameras on, kids, but stay muted and we'll recognize you a little later in the presentation. So we are now celebrating nineteen years of Lacey Loves to Read and it continues to be a popular and successful community literacy partnership in the city of Lacey, the Lacey Timberland Library, the North Thurston School District, and the South Sound Chamber. The mission of Lacey Loves to Read is to bring community together around the works of one award-winning author each year. We look for someone who has written a variety of books which will spark interest and encourage reading for all ages. And we couldn't do this program without the support of the many community sponsors and businesses, including Friends of the Lacey Library, WSCCU, Silvins, Scholastic Books, North Thurston Education Foundation, and the many more. This year's program will feature number one New York Times bestselling author of Fablehaven, Beyonders, Five Kingdoms series, and the new sequel to Fablehaven, Dragon Walk. He has also published many reader books, including Smarter Than a Monster, A Survival Guide. We are welcoming Brandon Mull to our community. I'm gonna turn it over to Karen.
Good evening, and I would just like to share with you that uh due to the continuing COVID nineteen issues in twenty twenty-one, we hosted our author uh virtually. And for this year, twenty twenty-two, we've actually had to uh cut out some of our usual Lacey Loves to Read activities like Read Around Lacey, our preschool reads, and our teen open mic. But we are excited that on February seventeenth, Brandon will be in Lacey live uh to help us livestream our student presentations. And this is in conjunction with Sky There Media Productions. And then that same evening, he will be available to greet Lacey Lights in person at our popular author, community author event, which will be held at North Thurston High School in the Cobal Center. And this will begin at six thirty PM. So he'll do a presentation this evening, followed by book signing in person. Part of the Lacey Loves to Read tradition is really to get kids excited about the program and combine arts with literacy. And we do this through our very famous bookmark contest. And this year, once again, we had hundreds of students to enter the contest. And this contest is sponsored in part by South Bay Press and the North Thurston Education Foundation. And so we have twenty-four winners representing effort school in the district as well as private schools and our homeschoolers. And tonight, we are here to introduce our six grand prize bookmark winners. And these winners are the top winners in each age group category in North Thurston Public Schools and the community. Once again, really, the competition was really tough. We had really great artwork submitted. It was simply amazing. The contest, in fact, uh, really the whole Lacey Loves to Read event is managed by a small group of dedicated volunteers, our Lacey Loves to Read Steering Committee. And if they're out there listening, I just want to give them a really big thank you for all of their help and the hours that they put into um making this event happen. So at this time, we will announce each of the winners and we will share their artwork. And since we are virtual today, um, just to let you know that the grand prize winners have already received a copy of Brandon Mull's book and some other little goodies. And uh they'll be receiving their signed certificate from our mayor. Thank you. And they've also had copies of the bookmarks printed. So they had stats that they could pass out to families uh and their friends. And their artwork uh will also be on display at the Lacey Library during our Lacey Loves to Read Month in February. So at this time, I would like to introduce the winner for the age group of kindergarten and first grade students. And we have Maloney from Chambers Prairie Elementary School. And I don't know if Maloney is here. Our uh representative for second and third grade. Our winner is Peyton Spencer and Peyton is a student at Lakes Elementary School. And if Peyton is here, thank you. And for our uh fourth and fifth grade grand prize winner, we have Emily Kuzer, who is a fourth grade student at Olympic View Elementary. And for our middle school, sixth through eighth grade, our grand prize winner is Finley Bear. Finley is a seventh grade student at Aspire Middle School. For our high school winner, ninth through twelfth grade, we have Zoe Corrigan. And she is a senior at North Thurston High School. And for our community grand prize winner, Addison Abbott. At the time of the bookmark contest, she was a ninth grade student at Northwest Christian High School, but she has since uh transferred to Timberline High School, but she did win for our community grand prize. Congratulations to our winners.
Right, we wanna thank the council for recognizing these kids. And I know it's a little different this year, but we're doing the best we can. And uh as we said, the kids will be getting their certificates from the mayor and we also made giant size bookmarks for them as commemorative things to keep. And um we're hoping to get them a chance to meet our author when he's in town as well.
Thank you so much. Can you uh stop sharing your screen?
I am looking for that. Hold on. Hold on, sorry. There we go.
There you go. Well, thank you. Uh, congratulations to all the winners. We're so proud of you. We wish we could be there in person and shake your hands like we usually do in years past, but um that you guys did some amazing artwork and we're really proud of what you've done. And uh I look forward to being able to, you know, uh sign those awards for you and get them out and then um and and hopefully at some point build a, or is there a chance to be able to meet the author this year?
Oh, yes. At our evening event at the Cobal Center, our author will be live. And so our grand prize winners will have a front row seat uh to his presentation. And they will definitely get to meet the author if if they come.
Great. Well, thank you and congratulations to all the winners. You did some amazing work and uh and thank you for loving to read and thank you to the South Sound Chamber and all all the partners uh who made this just a a wonderful um program for a long time in our community. Thank you. Have a great night. So next up on our agenda um is public comments on items not on the on our agenda. And we do have a couple of people who've signed up to talk tonight. And so uh let's hopefully bring in the first person uh uh which is former Deputy Mayor Cynthia Pratt. I don't need to go over the rules. Are you, are you here, Cynthia? There you go.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Miller, council members, and for allowing me to speak on items not on the agenda. My name is Cynthia Pratt. I live on Twenty First Avenue in Lacey. For several years now, my husband and I do a two-mile morning walk around our neighborhood. However, in the last two years, I've noticed that people have become exceedingly irresponsible. More and more, there is litter everywhere, plastics of all kinds, single bags, plastic wrap, plastic water bottles. There's cans um and even worse disposable masks. Plastic, in my opinion, is particularly a problem because as it disintegrates, chemicals leach into our soil. And all of these items have got to be a nightmare for the city public works crews as items gets washed into stormwater drains. It's been particularly bad this last year. So I would like to challenge the council, city staff, and our Lacey residents, starting tomorrow, the twenty-first, or if that's not possible, sometime this next week through the twenty-eighth, to grab a bag, put on some rubber gloves um to be safe, or if you don't have them, use washable knitted gloves or mittens and walk one or two blocks from your house picking up litter. Only one or two blocks. You could do more, but I'm making this doable for as many of us as possible. If I tried to Ben picking up litter the whole two miles, I'm afraid someone would need to pick me up. I'm, that's the way it is, but but I can and I. That's the way it is. But but I can, and I believe most other neighbors can manage one or two blocks. Don't trespass on private property. That's the responsibility of property owners. Just pick up litter on the road, curbs, sidewalks, and swales. You know, those gullies that collect rain. Throw the bag into the garbage bin, or you can sort out the cans and recycle those. If you do this at least once a year around Martin Luther King Day, we can once again be proud of our Lacy neighborhoods. And I want to end by thanking those that saw my Facebook post and or did this just on their own earlier this week because they too were appalled by the carelessness of discarded garbage in our neighborhood streets. I noticed the pile of water bottles on Judd and Twenty Second were picked up, as well as some other piles of litter. Now, that might have been done by some of our city staff as well, and I still think that is just great. And I felt so much better when I noticed the debris was gone. So thanks again for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate it. Being doing great work for the city of Lacey. And I usually don't do commentary at public comment, but I know this council has talked about creating an ongoing public program through Public Works where people can sign up and get a bucket and some, you know, litter picked up. I, I know we talked about that late last year because it was actually former Mayor Graham Sagerson who came forward to propose an idea like this. And obviously Deputy Mayor's picked this up and is asking to do this once a year. I really think we do need an ongoing program, and it sounded like we had council support for that. And so I just want let Scott know, please don't let that die on the vine. And let's, let's, let's continue to talk about it because I do think the entire community needs to pitch in on this issue because it has gotten really bad this past, past year, a couple of years for sure. So. Next up on our public comment is Lynn. You know, I know you know the, the, the process here as well.
Greetings. Lynn Fitzhugh, Program Director for Thurston Climate Action Team. I think this is the fifth or sixth time that I have testified before council or the Lacy Planning Commission regarding the urban forestry plan and two items I have been told that you will vote on in February. This is because instead of having more protections as your city tree surveys show that voters wanted, it has two measures that weaken protections. At this point, we have now agreed that some exception for HOAs and commercial property to be able to cut down a single tree and Arboris certified is causing damage makes sense. We are glad that due to public objection, this has been more clearly spelled out. However, we still oppose removal of your existing rule, which states that only five trees can be cut down in three years on a single family property since there is already a generous ability for homeowners to cut down trees. This provision has coexisted with a table that prescribes the minimum number of trees someone has to have on their property. It is not very many, five on a standard lot, two in the front, three in the back. So we feel that this five and three year rule has acted as a breaking action so that lots are not cut to their minimum and many have more than their minimum. Given that your tree study shows that tree loss of approximately fifteen percent took place over fifteen years, it seems bad to weaken any protection for trees. We know of no one asking for this to be removed, so we don't know why it was even suggested. All trees sequester carbon, which we are in desperate need of. Why would we let people cut down lots of trees when we need them protected for the planet? The Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, which you have adopted, does call for more tree protections and more tree planting. Planting is invalidated if lots of cutting is happening. We need to protect existing trees so that all new trees are gains. Reviewing this five years from now could result in more than a five percent tree loss in the meantime. Therefore, we ask you not to rescind this measure. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate it. So next up on our agenda, I think that's it with people who signed up for public comments. We did receive one written public comment. That's now part of the record. So next up on our agenda is proclamations. And so hopefully council has all that in front of them. And as we customarily do, we're gonna read through these proclamations and I'll get started on the first City of Lacy official proclamation. It says, whereas literacy is a top school and community concern is integral to success in school, business, and daily living. And you're on mute.
Whereas providing opportunities for citizens of all ages to discuss the cultural and literary merits of common reading will help create a culture of twenty minutes a day, family literacy and civic pride in Lacy. And
Whereas a community-wide reading program such as Lacy Loves to Read Month will support both students and community leaders in understanding the power of writing and literacy literacy in their lives. And
Whereas a partnership between North Thurston Public Schools, the City of Lacy, and the Lacy Timberland Regional Library has made this program possible. And
Whereas reading literature that explores diversity, global and social issues can help increase tolerance and unity within a community. And
Whereas reading informs us, empowers us, teaches us the lessons of history. And
Whereas Lacy citizens can read and discuss a variety of works by award-winning author Brandon Mull, who will visit our community February sixteenth through seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacy, on behalf of the Lacy City Council, do hereby proclaim February two thousand and twenty-two as Lacy Loves to Read Month in the City of Lacy. And I encourage citizens of all ages to acknowledge and celebrate the importance of reading, discuss works by author Brandon Mull. So I'm myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, today, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and I'll turn it back over to Jeanette.
Thank you. I want to thank the council for your continued support of this program that we have. It's a great program to be a part of, and it's a great partnership between all the entities that make up the City of Lacy. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. And now on to our next proclamation. And let's bring back Deputy Mayor Cynthia Pratt. I am very proud of this proclamation. It's a City of Lacy official proclamation.
Whereas poetry is the artful expression of human thought and feeling. And
Whereas poetry manifests the power and beauty of language. And
Whereas the appreciation of poetry nourishes the human spirit. And
Whereas poetry is a literary art form capable of exploring the deepest sorrow and the loftiest aspiration. And
Whereas the poet laureate cultivates the practices of writing, reading, and appreciation of poetry through example encouragement. And
Whereas the first poet laureate was crowned in thirteen fifteen after the classical age and poet laureates throughout history have taken initiative to encourage reading, writing, and love of poetry across the globe. And
Whereas Cynthia Pratt is a founding member of the Olympia Poetry Network, a published poet and author deserving of the initial honor to be named poet laureate.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacy, on behalf of the City Council, to hereby proclaim Cynthia Pratt to be the first poet laureate for the city. And I encourage all community members to embrace the art poetry and invite the poet laureate to share poetry with the city council once a year during the month of April to promote National Poetry Month. And so I'm myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, today's date, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and to our new poet laureate, former Deputy Mayor Cynthia Pratt.
So I would like to, if it's, do I have time now to do this, to share a poem?
Please do.
So I want to briefly set this up because I have lots and lots of poems I could share, including several years ago, I wrote one about Lake Lois. But because the Olympia Poetry Network Board challenged to set up some kind of a prompt resolution to our members for two thousand and twenty-two, and we had to put a little blurb about what we would like them to do. I jotted down something. Now, it's supposed to be kind of uplifting and make you feel good. But as you know, the end of the year was the there was snow and there was rain and it was, we're locked in our house and I was afraid of slipping, et cetera. So I ended up writing, my challenge for January and yours, if you choose to take it, is write about cold. A cold so bitter it burns your extremities, burns your ears to nose, but never use the word cold. Can I taste it, see and smell it? And then I got done with that and I looked at it before I sent it and I says, well, that is about as uplifting as stepping on a slug barefooted. So so I added, or instead, maybe I'll write about the silence of this winter. Anyway, I combined those two and that's what, so this is a brand new poem. It's called Forest Walk. Finally, my walk, delayed by heavy snow, turned into downpour, gloved and covered with a heavy coat to ward off winter's bitter chill, takes me to my favorite space where fur and cedar soar. In the distance, I stopped to hear around the bend a northern flicker, the sound strange in this forest of small birds, this thrum mixed in amongst the trees and chirping sounds of this early day. Rhythmic, the tapping stops and starts again, the humdrum morning awakes to common calls, siskin, chickadees, stellar jays. Light, a yellow glow now breaks through the trees, transforming ice to puddles, frost to glistening crystals. Above a limb hangs old man's beard, lichen like an aged wizard, disarming in its rarity, a chance encounter. I looked up, light now growing dim, a moment's break in bird song. I lean my palm on rough, wet bark in the silence, brief silence, a strum, steady strum of my beating heart. Thank you.
Lacy's poet laureate Cynthia Pratt. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And we look forward to hearing you for Lacy Poetry Month as well and for many years to come.
You bet. I've got an I would deal what I'm going to do. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks. Love it. I love it. Okay, next up, a referral from our planning commission ordinance sixteen twelve, Housing Implementation Initiatives. And Ryan. Oh, Rick. Are you taking this? Oh, no, Ryan's there.
Yeah, Ryan will be writing the presentation tonight.
I'm here. Good evening. Give me one second to be able to share my screen. Okay, so tonight in front of you, you have an ordinance for consideration that at least a portion of this is a planning commission referral. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail here, but it's essentially three separate housing implementation items. One is related to a zoning change. One is an adjustment to how we assess fees for nonprofit developers or for-profit developers providing affordable units. And then the final item is an extension of our multifamily tax exemption program. So the first, as I mentioned, is a low-density zone consolidation, a zoning amendment or Lacey Municipal Code sixteen point one three. And really what this does is it amends our zoning district to provide some densification options within our low-density zone. So this comes from our, first of all, our housing element, but, but has policies that support this action. But really, the specific actions are supported in two documents, the first being our Affordable Housing Strategy. This was a document adopted by the city council back in early two thousand and nineteen, which set forth a number of actions on ways that the city can inject more affordable housing and more workforce housing into our community. And it actually outlined specifically this item to reduce minimum lot size requirements and increase zoning density in older, single-family neighborhoods. Second document that also addresses this and supports this is our recently adopted Housing Action Plan. The city council adopted this as part of the two thousand and twenty-one slate of comprehensive plan amendments. This actually has within it, much like the Affordable Housing Strategy, a number of goals, policies, and actions that, that address housing needs within our community. And this one specifically addresses housing choices and has a specific action within it to increase the types of housing allowed in our low-density residential zones, things like duplexes and triplexes, et cetera. Another thing that really supports this zoning change is the supply and demand issue that we have associated with, with housing right now in Lacy. So we have limited land available in an ever-increasing population. So our population is set to increase by twenty-two thousand people by the year two thousand and forty-five. Our city limits are nearing buildout, and so we have very limited land to be able to put this, this high amount of population. In fact, we have about thirty vacant properties, and this is a two thousand and nineteen number. So you can imagine that in the last couple two, three years since this number came out, that we have even less than we did then. So in order to accommodate this large population, we really need to look at other ways to, to be able to provide more kind of gentle densification and, and to allow more density in our existing neighborhoods is one way to achieve this. We also have taken into consideration what our housing needs are according to income. And so this chart shows the number of dwelling units that are needed in the next twenty-five years according to their the area median income that people's incomes align with. And so you can see here that we have generally around two thousand additional dwellings, you know, for the lower, the very low and the upper end of our community. But really, the highest demand is in kind of that, that middle range, that fifty to eighty percent of AMI. And those are folks that wouldn't typically qualify or be able to afford a single-family home, and they might not even be fit for an apartment. So they're gonna need things like duplexes and triplexes, accessory dwelling units, those kinds of things in order to be able to, to provide their housing needs. So let's talk a little bit about what the actual proposed amendments are within this, excuse me, zoning text. The first is to consolidate our two existing zoning districts that are the lowest residential zones, the low-density zero to four and low-density three to six into one zone. The new zone will utilize the existing low-density three to six zoning standards. So if you are currently zoned low-density three to six, essentially, your standards will remain the same, except with some exceptions. And I'll talk about those exceptions here in a little bit. But really, the low-density zero to four becomes an up to low-density six units per acre zoning district. So really, we're looking at upzoning that low-density zero to four zone. Mentioned properties currently zoned low-density zero to four would receive an upzone and could develop at up to six units per acre with reduced lot sizes that are currently afforded to those in the low-density three to six zone. That exception that I was talking about is that a, under the proposal, a duplex or a triplex can be built on an existing lot or an existing home can be converted to exceed the maximum density requirement. So if you have an existing lot of record, a duplex or a triplex could be permitted on that existing lot of record. There are some, also some minor setback amendments, particularly to the rear setback, which would be essentially reduced from twenty feet down to fifteen feet. The city council's already approved single-story detached ADUs, allowing that rear setback to go from fifteen achieved a portion of this already. Let's look a little bit at how this would apply to your typical single-family lot in an older neighborhood in Lacy. So you can see here, these are, we'll just imagine, you know, ten thousand square foot lots, about a quarter acre in a, in existing lower-density neighborhood with good utilities that would be able to accommodate things like additional homes or a duplex or a triplex. Showing here on your screen is two options. This is kind of a, a whole Showing here on your screen is two options. This is kind of a a home ownership option, which would be on the left, that the the lot could be subdivided into two lots that would accommodate for two single-family homes. Another would be on the right-hand side where that could also be subdivided into two townhomes. So it would share a common party wall with a property line going right down the middle. In a more kind of a rental scenario where you would maybe have a property owner that would want to put a duplex or a triplex on each lot, this is what that configuration could look like, duplex on the left and a triplex on the right. The advantage of this would be that potentially somebody could construct a duplex or a triplex and live in one portion of that and rent out the other, which is becoming, I think, ever more common. Talk a little bit about some other factors that would actually limit the the developability of this additional density duplexes and triplexes, especially on these existing lots. First of all, private covenants may prohibit uses other than single-family. So again, this generally would apply to older subdivisions that would not have private covenants because typically, private covenants for single-family neighborhoods do prohibit currently uses other than single-family residential. So again, if if these are private covenants, those are things that are are privately overseen by homeowners associations, not rules regulated by the city of Lacey. So that would be something between a property owner and their HOA to be able to to govern that. Second thing here that kind of limits things would be the utility availability. So you know, if if this is an existing lot with, you know, limited access, especially to city sewer, the development feasibility of something like this may be limited because they might not be able to have the space to be able to to do a duplex or a triplex with the need for a septic tank and drain field to accommodate that additional space. There's also economic considerations, you know, so I think the the common fear is that by by allowing duplexes or triplexes, especially in single-family neighborhoods, that all of a sudden, the fabric of the neighborhood is going to change because, you know, we're going to have out-of-town, out-of-state developers come in and want to convert a lot of these to duplexes or triplexes to take advantage of a hot residential market. And really, when we're talking about this, we're looking at two things. We're looking at this might apply particularly to to vacant lots, but also distressed properties. If there's a a single-family home that's worth a significant amount of money, that that typically isn't worth tearing down to build additional units. So if you could think of, you know, a typical home in Lacey, maybe four hundred thousand dollar, you know, modest house these days, you know, that typically that wouldn't be torn down to to be constructed into a duplex or a triplex. It's going to have to be something that the value of that is is so low that it makes sense to put additional units to tear down the existing house and put additional units on the property. We're also concerned about how these types of units comply with our compatibility requirements and design review, and we have had on our books for a number of years, design review and compatibility requirements in Lacey Municipal Code fourteen point two-three that address things like this. So we have a specific section within our code that talks about compatibility of duplexes and triplexes in existing, single-family neighborhoods. So they have to have the same type of roof pitches, siding types, paint schemes, front porches, garage orientations that single-family homes do in that same neighborhood. We are recommending that there and that within the the draft ordinance that's in front of you, there has been some additional considerations made for privacy. So one of the things that has been added to this section is is to bolster the or the privacy requirements. So as I mentioned, this did go through a a planning commission process, a very robust planning commission process. A nine-month process with significant public outreach and deliberation. The planning commission did weigh the public testimony, the information received, and developed an extensive record that supports the amendments. This is something that the planning commission didn't take lightly. There was, at the end of the planning commission's recommendation, a six to two recommendation of approval. One thing I wanted to mention was that currently state legislation prohibits, if you if you are to pass this tonight, any type of administrative or judicial appeals as a result of your actions. So the fear was that some of the some communities were adopting amendments like this and that those things would be appealed by, you know, unhappy property owners or homeowners associations or the like. The state has actually protected the city from any type of appeal if you were to adopt this tonight. In fact, I think there's state legislation in the the current, under the current legislative session that's being considered that actually would require the type of amendments that you were doing tonight. So if that was to to occur, we're already actually one step ahead. And we would have already passed what the the legislature may require coming out of this current legislative session. The second is an expansion of our fee waiver program for affordable housing. So you have an amendment within the ordinance as well to Lacey Municipal Code one point two zero. So we do have an existing fee waiver program, which currently authorizes fee waivers for community-based housing development organizations, the Boys and Girls Club and Habitat for Humanity. This has been a very successful program. I've worked specifically with Habitat for Humanity on their their Deo Vista project. And they've told me specifically without this fee waiver program that the 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 development itself wouldn't have penciled out. And so they're very happy that we have such a program. The the fees that are eligible to be waived through this type of a program are things like our, all of our building permit fees, mechanical plumbing, electrical fees, basically things that you would get at the Community and Economic Development Front Counter, including your plan check fees. You're also able to waive your water meter fee, your transportation mitigation fee, so the the fee you pay for your transportation impacts, and then you're also able to defer, not waive, but defer the payment of your wastewater connection until later date. So the code in front of you tonight is supported by our Affordable Housing Strategy, which specifically recommends expansion of this to the private sector, specifically building affordable housing, and has within it the program criteria, and that criteria includes an income threshold for what must be considered affordable. And that is to, these must be units that are designated for people making eighty percent or less of the area median income. There is a minimum number of units that have to be designated within a development that's ten percent. The unit is required to stay affordable in perpetuity. So there is no length of time, basically the length of time that if if we waive fees, that the the unit is required to be rented out or provided to somebody making eighty percent or less of the AMI in perpetuity. If they do want to remove this from the program, then they have to repay those fees that have been waived. The developer is also required to enter into a partnership with a nonprofit for management. Currently, the city of Lacey does not have the staff or the resources to be able to oversee this. We would review the annual reporting that would be done by the nonprofit or the the management company. We would not be overseeing specifically this program. We did do outreach associated with this specific amendment. We reached out directly to O M B Government Affairs and the Thurston Chamber. They did have concerns about this program, about potentially increasing permit fees to subsidize reductions. So if we are, in essence, reducing fees for some, they would not want to see that we would raise fees for other others to kind of balance the the checkbook, so to speak. The other things would be that they have limited experience in providing low-income units. So our our local development community do not typically provide affordable units. Those typically come from builders or developers outside of our community, and so they have limited experience with taking advantage of these types of programs. But they did feel that it would be an important tool that could improve development feasibility. So the last one in front of you is the extension of the multifamily tax exemption program. That's Lacey Municipal Code three point six four. We have had a multifamily tax exemption program now in place for a number of years. It was established in twenty fourteen. And right now, that program is set to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, unless the council takes action to extend it. Little bit about the program. It exempts the payment of property taxes for the building portion of a multifamily project of twenty units or more, specifically for the Woodland District, also known as Lacey Midtown. This exemption is for eight years for market rate apartments or or multifamily, up to twelve years of an exemption if at least twenty percent are designated as low income, and that definition of low income here is eighty percent or below AMI. One project has utilized this exemption. That's the MGR Apartments on Sixth Avenue that are currently under construction. The recommendation, this recommendation comes specifically out of the Lacey Midtown Market Analysis, which basically says we should consider extending the program because it's had positive impacts on the economics of redevelopment in the area. And there is a limited window for future projects to take advantage of the program, given development timelines. So with such long development timelines, we may be, you know, risking losing future projects if there's a risk of this exemption running out. And so essentially, we've got in front of you tonight an ordinance that would extend that program through December thirty-first, twenty thirty-four. So with that, I'll stop sharing my screen. You have an ordinance in front of you tonight for consideration and a planning commission recommendation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, Ryan, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance number sixteen twelve, amending Lacey Municipal Code to implement recommendations of the Affordable Housing Strategy and Housing Action Plan.
Second.
Been moving seconded, discussion. Councilor Vasquez.
Ryan, I'm just curious if we know of any developers that are looking at potential projects in Lacey. Since you mentioned the multifamily tax exemption and the narrow window, like, do we have folks kind of on the line that are thinking about building in Midtown that might be in fact affected by this?
Rick, do you know, I think you mentioned an additional project?
We do have the one existing project that's moving forward, Sixth Avenue Place, and the same developer is looking to do additional multifamily project in in the Midtown area around Woodland Square Loop. And he has identified as one of the, one of the several reasons, but one of them was the advantage of the multifamily tax exemption, because as we're as they're developing units in this area, this particular location and and market's a little bit unknown, and so it helps them kind of get over that hump in terms of financing and and figure out how they can create some nice units, meet a market demand and at a price that they can make the performal work.
So, Rick, what, I mean, I I apologize to the council. I know this was under discussion at a work session in early December that I was part of and then I had to leave because I wasn't, I wasn't feeling well, but the multifamily tax exemption is always a little, you know, tough for me to swallow since it's not only the the city of Lacey preventing the 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 increase in the property value over those years, you're also not allowing your other junior taxing districts to have that increase over years. Not so, the the fire district is a big one, right? So we're we're building multifamily housing. There's more calls coming to the fire district, but they don't get the increase in property value. The other one, schools, you know, you're bringing in more multifamily housing, you have more family, you know, kids coming in, using the school district, and they don't receive that as well. However, we're, we know we're in a a housing crunch, especially when it comes to affordable housing. And so when you look at the twelve years, make, you know, that makes a lot more sense to me. It's like they they get, you know, four more years, but they have to at least have twenty percent of of their housing stock to be affordable housing. That seems like it's a, it's a good trade-off in this circumstance, since we need more affordable housing. Have you, have you talked to MGR? If we only pass the the twelve-year and and didn't do the eight-year, what, what, what do you think that would do to the to to Lacey Midtown?
I I haven't had a a specific conversation with MGR or other potential developers, just in general conversations. I know that with the Sixth Avenue Place, those are the first set of multifamily units that have been built since two thousand and eight. We do have a limited supply of residential in the in the Midtown area. And that's been a key focus of the Downtown Two Thousand Plan that was reinforced with the with the district strategic plan, is that vision of trying to transition this Midtown area into a a more dynamic and eight, an eighteen-hour type of place. And one of the core types of uses that was been missing in that area is residential. And so trying to create that dynamic and and in the sense of placemaking. So you have that vision and a way to implement that vision and provide that ascending for that one type of land use, and then looking forward to you know, from here on out with the MGR projects and other interests. Again, that residential market's untested in that urban form in Lacey, and so this helps them develop and define what that market looks like. So I would say they would be reluctant if they had to provide a low income, because they're trying to figure out how to create units and make their performal work. And once they start identifying that market, I can see that being feathered in in future years. One thing on the twenty percent minimum of low-income use for a twelve-year exemption, you also have a maximum of thirty percent of the units can be low-income. So back at the time that the council initially adopted the multifamily tax exemption program, you have a window between twenty and thirty percent of the units that can be low-income because of concerns of concentration.
Totally understandable. Councilor Greenstein?
Just a couple of quick comments. Um, one, thank you, Ryan. Great presentation. I'm really excited that we are moving forward or at least looking at changing the rules so that the for-profit businesses can take advantage of building affordable housing, as we've been talking about for quite a long time now. So I'm glad we're moving forward on that. And then on the tax exemption, I I would not be supportive of changing it to only the twelve-year option. I like giving the 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 developers the option to go both ways. If they want the longer, they have to put the affordable housing. I think that's great. But I think we need, overall, we just need more housing. All housing, I still believe that all housing becomes more affordable when there is more housing, supply and simple supply and demand. So if this encourages building by giving them the eight-year exemption, then I think it's it's a huge positive for the city.
Councilor Stedman, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, Lenny pretty much hit every point I was going to make, but the the end result is more units during the basically emergency, not just crisis, you know, and they come online sooner than than later. So it's a win-win.
My one rebuttal will be to this, and I I'll support this going forward, is we have twenty-six hundred multifamily units about right in the in the pipeline right now. Right? And so to to say that we do, we need to attract more multifamily units, when you have that number in the pipeline right now, it's it's a, that's a tough argument. Now, I understand in Lacey Midtown, we've, we just, we need more residential units, and guess what? We're seeing it come. I I think what MGR will see is that those will be filled up pretty darn quick because they they do great work. They do quality work. They're going to be very attractive, and it's going, it's going to do well. But but what we need to see is more affordable housing. And and this doesn't do anything for more, I I understand the argument more overall, hopefully will bring down the, I, I'll, you know, it would be nice if we were extending a multifamily tax exemption that we required some affordable housing. That's just my two cents. That's what I'd like to see. Maybe we can re-approach this, not only in in this area, but to talk about even further in some other targeted areas. Because the multifamily tax exemption is only allowed in Midtown right now, and now we're going to extend it in Midtown. But this could be an use possibly in other parts, but like I said, I'm only interested in doing that if we have the affordable housing piece in it. And I, you know, that's just my two cents. That's where I'm at. Mike, you have something else?
Yeah, my only rebuttal for that is we took a ten-year layoff with the recession and lending issues and and that. So this, this, you know, we're playing catch-up. You know, it it would be one thing if we just, you know, increased seven percent inventory every year to to match a population growth, but the reality is, you know, there's a lot of challenges out there, not just with, you know, the economy or private sector, public sector, all that stuff. We're playing catch-up, and these units are better, you know, probably when it come, at least, it eat, especially at this pace, without this tool, without dangling and carrying it out in front of the the horse, if you will.
I agree. I think it makes sense in Midtown. I just want to have this conversation going going further, but you know, maybe even going further in Midtown. We'll see how things go along. Robin, Councilor Vasquez?
Yeah, I wanted to say I agree with Mike. I think we're catching up, right? Because there was such a long delay when we didn't have a lot of housing being built. But I also like the idea that Rick suggested that maybe in a few years, we take another look at this, because this is a But I also like the idea that Rick suggested that maybe in a few years, we take another look at this, because this is a tool that the city has been incentivized the development of multifamily housing. But what we know we need the most, like the place where we may be shortest and that is probably lagging even more than other types of multifamily housing is affordable housing. Right? You look at the numbers of people who are in the lower income brackets, that eighty percent or lower of the average family income. We just don't have enough units for them. And so maybe after this market has been tested, after we get maybe another development in there that accesses the general multifamily use exemption. Maybe that would be a good moment for us to reconsider and see if it makes sense to just make it the twelve year with affordable housing piece.
Is this, does this legislation extend it for how long, Rick?
Ten years.
Another ten years?
It's December thirty first of twenty twenty or twenty thirty four. So it would be like, you know, twelve years, give or take.
Well, is there, is there some agreement? Maybe we should shorten that a little bit to encourage them to get going on this, this housing and it gives us gives us an opportunity to, to, to relook at this instead of wait twelve, what, where's it going with the, with the twelve years?
It's the original one that was originally ten, the red, the original exemption was for ten years. We're extending it another ten years. So that's based on the original exemption.
And we're eight years into it.
Correct.
And I would, I would suggest maybe keeping that ten year horizon, but it doesn't mean we can't come back and revisit the ordinance and the program. And because there's a couple of things, factors going on too, that, you know, when you look at the Midtown area and the housing goals there and, and then also throughout the community. And the other part of it is in Midtown, you have a different, you're going to have a different construction dynamic. You're going to have a more of the, the four over one type of construction, vertical multifamily, and then other places you're having more of the garden style. So there's different construction types and methods that cause cost and, and the need for different types of programs. So as, as a council has, has talked about it, you can look at this at any point in time, and there's going to be other planning processes in, in other corridors and suburbs that's going to have this topic come up. And there'd be opportunity to look at those things, those areas strategically and how this can be one of the tools in the peripheral tool belt to be able to try to reach some of the, the goals among those sub areas and corridors.
So I guess it would be my recommendation that we do take a look at and, you know, five years or something like, and see where it's going. I like the idea of, of like encouraging you know, then to take advantage of this sooner than later, if, if that's the case. Councilmember Cox, and then I'll go back to Councilmember Stedman.
Because there are two more, really almost three more years remaining in this multifamily exemption. Is there anything that says we have to pass that part right now? Could we take our, a little more time with this? Because I think there's good points on, you know, of being said tonight and things to think about on this.
Well, on, on, in terms of timing and construction, so we have the, the second project starting to come in through the pre-sub process and in terms of, of finding their paperwork to enter into the program near that contract with the council. Uh, that'll be about, if, if they're able to submit application within this uh, first quarter of this year, that'd be about eighteen to twenty four months. And so you're going to be right up against that window if you don't move forward active days. We want to kind of make sure that we're being proactive in extending this program so that we don't run into a timing issue when somebody's ready to execute a contract with the council.
Got it. Well, maybe we.
I'll be really quick.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, but everybody knows we've been in, in the construction boom for three, four years and prices increased, you know, the cost of plywood and all that stuff. It's not going to last forever. This could be a tool that levels out that dip when it happens. Um, so can, you know, um, builders or developers can leverage that tool to, you know, keep constructing when they wouldn't normally do it because of this incentive, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand. I'll, I'll, I'll go on. I will encourage the council revisit this, you know, especially in the five year mark. That, let's, let's be honest, there's only a couple more lots where it, in all the Midtown where anyone can take advantage of this. So we're not, we're not talking about the tunnel of different properties. And so, um, we need to keep that in mind. And again,
I just get one.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I'm sorry, I said one, just one item of clarification on, for one group, we had, um, they had to have ten percent um, of their units had to be affordable units. And then for another group, we had, they had to have twenty percent, is it?
No, it's.
The, the program is, is a, it's a two, two paths that a developer could take. They can take, ask for an eight year exemption and they only have to provide market rate housing. But they also have the incentive to ask for a twelve year exemption. If they do a twelve year exemption, at least twenty percent of the units have to be, meet the definition of low income.
Okay, but earlier in the presentation, there, there was a group that, that had to have a ten percent of their units had to be. So that's on the fee waiver program, the fee waiver program, you have to have at least a minimum of ten percent. Because in order for a program to make any sense for anybody to administer, you have to have a critical mass of, of units to be able to administer so that that typically is about ten percent to be able to do that. So, you know, these are different regulations and different sections of our code. Um, the, the ten percent stands alone, and that's within the, the section that waives fees and not, not, it doesn't have anything to do with the multifamily tax exemption.
Yeah, that's.
Right. So, okay, so if you're, if you're going for the fee waiver, um, you, you need to have ten percent, so ten percent of your units need to be uh, eighty percent AMI or lower. Um, and if you want the tax waiver, um, you've got to have twenty percent at, at eighty percent AMI or lower. Just for context, AMI eighty percent of the AMI in Thurston County is sixty five thousand dollars a year. And so I, if that, if that lets you know where, where we're headed. Um, you know, it, that saying that if you're, if you're making sixty five or five grand a month, you're, you're low income in this county, which basically means we are short on houses all the way around and we really need to build a whole lot of them. We're behind a lot.
I totally agree with that. So that's a good question. Can you combine these two? Could, 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 could MGR uh, take advantage of the fee waiver program and the twelve year multifamily tax exemption?
Isn't it only certain types of organizations can access the fee waiver program?
No, we're extending it to, to the private sector now too.
Got it.
Correct. There are two different sections of code. There is nothing in either that says you can't apply for, you could apply for both. There, there's no limitation.
Well, we should definitely talk about that going forward and other areas and targeted areas. So, okay, the only other question I have in all this, I'm, I'm, I'm in support. I just wanted to put it out there. Um, is where was the two pl- uh, planning commission members who, who voted against the, um, the recommendation? What, what was their arguments? Do you remember, Rick?
Um, one, um, so they were, they were voted on the, um, going to consolidation, I believe is tied to that compatibility issue, ensuring there's compatibility and how that would look over time and potentially the, the rate of, of change. But as we know, um, you know, these are things that won't happen overnight. These are gradual changes and we also have the, um, design standards that look at compatibility and privacy in, uh, house design and adjacent properties in place. Those are the primary issues that were still concerns for them was that rate of change and impacting the neighborhood and, um, um, design standard for compatibility.
Great. But as you pointed out, you, you're not going to be able to put a big two-story house next to a, a single-story rambler right on a property line, right?
We're. You want to talk about the design standards a little bit and what that looks at and for compatibility?
Yeah. So there are compatibility requirements, you know, obviously you, you can't build to the property line. You have to meet setbacks. Um, you know, when we're looking at things like duplexes and triplexes, I, I mentioned already, we've got the, you know, the same design standards apply to a duplex or triplex that applies to a single family home in, in terms of design, but also we're bolstering the, the, the privacy requirements. So requiring between the part, property line and the, the house of basically, you know, a, a fence with landscaping and those kinds of things. Um, that's been addressed through the, the language and the ordinance to, to, um, you know, not address compatibility, but also um, address some privacy issues as well. Uh, because you will get multi, you know, you'll, you'll get, there's nothing that's going to prevent a two-story structure next to a single you know, story rambler. Um, that happens in single family neighborhoods all across Lacey. Um, so you know, we want to, you know, in encouraging this, we also want to make sure that privacy is, is addressed as well.
Yeah. And that legislation that Ryan mentioned is moving forward this year, making it, that may make it mandatory. Uh, part of that provision is you wouldn't be able to have restrictions that wouldn't be typical of a single family residence. You still have a setback, some uh, height limitations, but they'd be equivalent to a single family home as well.
And, and, and this is not going to take an effect in the old historic Lacey neighborhood though, right?
That's correct. That's a completely separate zoning designation. That's Lacey Historic Neighborhood is the, the name of the zoning district. We're all, only specifically dealing with our our zones that are designated as low density, separate from the Lacey Historic Neighborhood.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance, amending the Lacey municipal code to implement the recommendations of the affordable housing strategy housing action plan. All in favor of that motion, signified by a saying aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion actually, uh, passes. Thank you. And thank you for, uh, humoring me on my conversation about the multifamily tax exemption. Let's see, next up on, um, our agenda is under the mayor's report. Um, first up is the, uh, appointment of Dave Weber to the Board of Parks Commissioners. We obviously um, just had a vacancy. Um, and uh, Dave was one of those members that if the council remembers right, when I did interviews late last year, we had like this amazing group of people come along and, and, and Dave was one of those people who um, had, you know, cares a lot about our community, was a, was a great interviewer. We just didn't have enough spots available. Um, but we told him, hey, please, if you're, if you're interested, you know, whole, whole front, you know, my openings come up and sure enough, uh, an opening came up. And so it's, it's really, um, great to be able to, um, um, appoint Dave Weber to the Parks Board Commission, and that would be my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Dave, uh, would you like to introduce yourself real quick to the Lacey City Council?
Sure, I can do that. Um, I've lived here in Lacey for the past twenty-two years. Currently in a semi-retired state, I work part-time for both the Olympian and K G Y Radio covering sports. Um, in the past, I was primarily known around here. I guess I was the athletic director at the Evergreen State College for ten years. And during that period of time, I was also on the, uh, Briggs YMCA board. So I have a little bit of experience being on boards, but that's the basics.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions for Dave?
Just a little bit of experience.
Seeing none, it's been moved in a second to appoint Dave to the Boards of Park Commissioners, all in favor of that motion, signified by a saying aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion actually passes. Thank you, Dave. I know, we know you have your work cut out for you. There's a lot of stuff going on in the parks missions, but thank you for, uh, willing stepping up and giving your time to the city of Lacey. We really appreciate it.
All right. Thanks a lot. Looking forward to it.
Next up, under the mayor's reports is council's assignments to inner government boards and commissions. We had a work session last week. Um, and, uh, leaving that work session, there's been a couple of changes that's going to, uh, happen. There is a, a change, uh, that Councilmember Greenstein and Councilmember Kunkel approached me on. Can you, can you please remind me of what that needs to be? Councilmember Greenstein?
Try, if I can remember, I think it was me taking land use, if I remember correctly, and Ed taking um.
Community relations.
Community relations. Thank you.
So there's, there's that one. The other, the other change in this is, uh, Councilmember Cox is, uh, we're substituting the chair, hopefully for Regional Housing Council. And so, um, she's going to be the primary on that and I'm going to be her alternate. And so those are the two changes. Is there anything else you remember, uh, Scott? Councilmember Cox?
I believe we had it referred on, on Regional Planning Council.
Oh, yes. So there's a, there's a thing that went out that, that needed to be corrected. We had talked about, um, uh, Councilmember Vasquez being, uh, under, um, the, our representative of, of the regional planning.
DRPC.
DRPC. And somehow that got switched and what went out. So.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Just a question. Did, did you, Carolyn, you are the Chair of the O R H C now? That changed already?
No, they, they will have elections next week when the, um, they meet, but I've been approached by several people and I'm going to be put forward to become the next chair.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion of Councilmember Vasquez?
I think I haven't had a chance yet to talk with Councilmember or Councilmember Kunkel and Deputy Mayor Miller, but you could take me off of the Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking, just since I think we had both myself and Councilmember Kunkel there.
That's, I, I know that, um, Councilmember Miller is going to be the lead on that. And what we, what we had said is if you guys also want to get involved in that, um, you're pleased welcome to do that. You don't have to be the official representative to Lacey, but we encourage you to do that. And, and Councilmember Miller can, can get you, um, some more information on that. So, and I think, um, you know, I think Councilmember Kunkel is interested, and if you're interested as well, uh, you know, that's up, that's up to you, but, uh, Councilmember Miller will still be the primary representative of that.
Well.
We got everything. Hey, I think we got it all spread away. Um, can I get a motion to approve the council assignments to the inner government boards and commissions?
Move to approve the amended council assignments as presented?
Second.
Moving seconded, is there any discussion?
As amended or presented?
Because.
They were amended, presented. I said presented.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the motion is amended and there's a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion actually carries. So thank you for that. And I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I have a, a three items before you, and I also want to make a comment at the end, but the first item is a, a contract award related to the demolition of the Lacey Museum and Cultural Center. Ashley Smith will provide the background and information on that.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I did not prepare a, a visual presentation for this evening, given the scope of the project and prior, multiple prior reviews, excuse me, I'm videos off. Um, the staff recommends a ward of Lacey Construction Contract Number twenty nineteen dash forty-one to Swafford Excavating for a demolition of the, um, the fifty-seven hundred building, as it is referred to, but the future site of the Lacey Museum and Cultural Center. Uh, there were ten bids received for this project with the low bid at three hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-six cents. Um, there are eighty working days allotted to the project and it is expected to begin in February. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
The motion, please.
Move to award Lacey Contract Number P W two zero one nine dash one four to Swafford Excavating from Oshiego, Washington in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-six cents.
Sec.
Moving seconded, discussion, Councilmember Stedman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things. Uh, the first and quick, quickest, easiest one is why did DP excavation get rejected? Um, but the second one, being in the leasing business, um, I know people like that, that site. And I know it's a big warehouse and their spaces are very limited. When is construction on the museum going to start? Because you know, we could be leasing that building out if, you know, instead of demoing it. Plus, you know, we just talked about the current in, um, economic in instruction, construction boom. These prices could be elevated because work is so prominent and busy. Um, so those are my concerns, but.
I can't, I can't talk about the, um, why it was rejected, but, uh, Councilmember Kunkel brought this same, same issue uh, last Thursday's work session, which is, that's what I, and I, you know, I know you weren't able to make it. Um, but it was discussed then that this was a part of, um, the award that we received, uh, through the state of Washington to allow us to do this work. And so we've been given a grant to do this. Now we have to meet that, those grant expectations, which is setting this up now, you know, it, when.
Pretty money is good money.
Yeah. We have to do this in stages. And so we're, you know, this is the, this stage and then we go on to the. Yeah, we have to do this in stages, and so we're on, you know, this is the this stage, and then we go on to the next stage and the next stage. And so we know there's gonna be some gap in here, we're in a, you know, it's a good reminder that uh the Lacy Community Foundation is gonna be approaching people closest to you soon on 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 some uh uh on on a funding strategy for us to get to the a building of this uh Museum and Cultural Center, and so that's being done right now as well, and to go along with some other things. And hopefully we'll we'll get to the uh the building side as soon as possible, but this was a grant that we're fulfilling the responsibilities of that grant. Uh can you let, is there a reason, can you answer the question about D P A?
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, they were our second low bidder. However, upon review of their bid, there was an administrative error that um mandated rejection. So that was an administrative process. And to add a little bit to your question, Councilmember Stedman, um it is dependent on funding. This work, however, will prepare the site to be development-ready essentially, so whenever funding is available to construct the new Museum and Culture Center, the the design documents are ready to go and the site will be ready.
Councilmember Greenstein?
It's curious if there would be any traffic implications during that, during the process.
During construction?
Well, during, I guess, the teardown of the existing building, right?
Uh good good question. So we will have construction fencing around the affected areas of the site. The depot and playground area will still be open to the public uh as well as the um trail on the north side of the property. There may be some impacts to the uh sidewalk access on the south end of the facility. As you know, the the building is really close in that area. But if that were to occur, then they would have to um get a traffic mitigation plan approved by the city and then redirect pedestrian traffic around that area.
So it won't affect vehicle traffic then, even though it, because it's so close to the road on the one side, that's why I was curious.
That's a good question, Councilmember Greenstein. We may uh end up closing one vehicle lane there, but that'll be um up to discretion of the contractor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Seven?
Yeah, one one last thing. It it would be nice to see some training with their fire department or police department. I know it's a um main arterial, but um you know, there's always situations that that you can practice, you know, active shooters or uh, you know, putting out a fire, something like that. It would nice to, nice to have that, but um I, you know, it's a busy intersection, I I understand.
Any other discussion? Then seeing none, it's been moved in second to award this contract to the low bidder, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Then that motion actually carries. Uh next up, is there an interlocal agreement for the Thurston Regional Climate Action Plan Phase Four grant? It's to you, Grant.
Morning, Council. Um before you tonight is the uh interlocal agreement to extend our participation in the climate action planning process with our regional partners in Thurston County and the cities of Olympia, Lacy and Tumwater. So um we did discuss the uh the agreement at the work session last last week. But it does, you know, it's for three years, uh it helps fund the the base uh cost of the our share of the base cost uh for for Thurston Regional to continue the process and has a this year a specific work program that um will get us good information on uh sequestration, carbon sequestra- sequestration actions uh that'll inform our local implementation of climate actions uh down the line as we've adopted the the plan. Uh it's a three-year interlocal agreement, but the funding, uh our participation is based on our our your decision every year through the budget process to continue to fund our seat at the table, so. With with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The motion, please.
May I move that we authorize the city manager to execute the interlocal agreement between the City of Lacy, City of Olympia, City of Tumwater, Thurston County, and the Thurston Regional Planning Council for implementation of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan?
Second.
Moving seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Then that motion actually carries.
Thank you, Council.
You. Last one? Is the interlocal agreement for the regional building electrification cost assessment study?
All right. Good evening, uh Council, and this is following on the heels of the uh Phase Four Agreement that you just authorized. Uh we are requesting that the council authorize the city manager to sign in a second interlocal agreement uh to proportionately fund a regional study to identify and assess the cost of implications of requiring new construction to be one hundred percent electrical energy reliant. And this uh particular interlocal agreement comes from, if you look at the the uh Phase Four scope that was just presented, there is a uh a a work item that is under other funds, and that is this uh electrification study. Uh through the uh conversation on developing a Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, uh it was identified through a twenty-eighteen assessment that about uh fifty-nine percent of the greenhouse gas emissions were um were from the built environment, and so that spurred a conversation about uh moving towards uh electrically sourced buildings for uh appliances and heating and and all the various uh mechanical equipment. However, there's not a lot of information here locally about um what the impact of that would be. So this particular study is a uh is an effort to look at what are those impacts of considering a policy decision such as this? What's that impacts to the cost of development, operation and maintenance, and there can be other conversations related to it um in terms of other identified impacts that we not may not be aware at this time. Uh so again, the uh this contract would be, if uh we participate, it will be managed by the City of Olympia. All four partners, Thurston County, Tumwater, Lacy and Olympia would participate in a um as stakeholders group and would meet monthly to uh provide um uh data and information to the consultant and also to provide a review and feedback of any preliminary draft analysis before a final study is done. Again, this is an effort to be proactive and identifying what are those issues before a policy decision may come up to the various uh elected bodies in the future. Uh one other point I want to request council to consider as part of the motion, um if you do move forward with this, is just yesterday I found out that we have not received all the comments uh from the uh Thurston County in terms of uh feedback on the interlocal agreement, primarily if there are um any um uh type of graphical edits or format coming from Thurston County's legal department. We request as part of the motion to consider that, and if there are substantive changes, we will bring that back to the council for further review, but if it's just typo or format changes, uh we would proceed forward with uh signature if the council chooses to authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement tonight. And with that, any questions?
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign this interlocal agreement to the proportionate fund of a regional study to identify and assess the cost implications of requiring new construction to be one hundred percent electrical energy reliant with uh Rick Locke's recommendation that if there's uh just minor changes that you allow that to go forward, but if there's a major change that it comes back to the city council um for approval. Moved and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Greenstein?
Yeah, I mean, I have considerable concerns with this, and I'm not happy that we're doing it. I will support it only for one reason, because I do think we need to have a seat at the table. To me, this looks very much like something that they determine it, the the outcome's been predetermined before hiring me a consultant. I think this is headed in a very s- specific direction, so I am opposed. And again, I will support it only because I think it's a necessity that Lacy have a seat at the table while this is going on.
Uh, Councilmember Miller?
So, Rick, are we just talking about the the removal of the the one fossil fuel component in 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 most of the houses that are in residential or commercial buildings, which is, you know, the gas? Is that what we're talking about here?
Correct. So this would look at for new construction going forward, new construction of the impacts of of making the uh residential as well as commercial construction be a hundred percent electrical grid reliant and and prohibit new connections to natural gas.
So are are we are we talking about adding anything like solar or 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 any, you know, any any other types of of? I I just wanna be clear that we're.
So this is just gonna be the uh Deputy Mayor, this is just gonna be the study that's gonna hopefully give us a lot more in. There's definitely a lot more information that we need to to um about this. Uh it's, you know, and so this is making sure that we have a seat at the table.
And and we can ask additional questions. Could be such as, well, how's it affect certain types of uses that depend on natural gas? You know, for instance, the the obvious one is resident or restaurants, and does that affect their operations or what are those other trade-offs? And uh and as we see that information come forward, we can ask those questions um as part of that uh, I guess, staff committee.
So so is this gonna be just staff that's gonna be meeting on a regular basis, or is it gonna be elected officials there as well?
There'll there'll be staff, because this is focusing on developing the study and analysis, but then would be presented to the regional uh steering committee and eventually uh to all the various elected bodies. Councilmember Stedman has a question.
Councilmember Stedman?
Yeah, I've spoke directly with stakeholders in this um and other areas throughout the country that um have done similar studies, and they all seem supportive. I've talked to my tenants as well as other businesses, and they think information is is better than not having the information. So regardless, you know, what direction people may or may not think this is going in, if information is information and it's seven thousand dollars, it's pretty cheap study, so um from my uh homework and my outreach, it's seems like both sides seem to support it, so. My ten cents.
Definitely need this information. Uh Councilmember Kunkel?
No, I just for clarity, who who specifically is doing the study? It, are we, is it an independent third-party firm that has no dog in the fight, for lack of a better term, or who who specifically is doing the study?
Um the the consultant firm is is a um Eco Northwest. Uh they're they're a firm, I believe, out of um Tacoma, where they are, they're a large firm. They have several offices. They are the closest office is in Seattle. Um and they could, they're gonna be that independent consultant that'd be under contract with Olympia managing that con- the administration of the contract.
So it it u- using the term independent is is kind of more or less nebulous. It it sounds like they're already a a promoter of this change, just from the title of of who they are. Is that correct?
Well, they they do lots of different types of work, and I haven't talked to them specifically, but in the in the packet is the proposal that they put together with including the scope of what they would study. And and again, it goes back to the oversight of the uh the staff committee uh as we look at that information and ask those questions.
I I think it's short-sighted to try to rid ourselves of the use of natural gas, uh being a very cheap and and clean burning fuel, uh just that that makes no sense to me. Uh but, you know, I, again, I will support this only to have a seat at the table.
Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved in second to authorize city manager to sign this interlocal agreement, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Then that motion actually carries. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Council.
So just one other item. Um I wanted to recognize Public Works and their efforts, and also specifically Mark Hoppy. Um TRPC granted the City of Lacy an additional award of uh two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Hopefully I'm not stealing uh the Chair of Transportation Policy Board's.
You are, you are, I'll remind you.
Or I'll rep for TRPC, but this is good news. Uh that two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars will go for the design of the roundabout, uh future roundabout at Willamette Drive and Campus Glen Drive in northeast Lacy. So um just good works to our staff for leveraging grant dollars out there to improve our transportation system. So just wanted to provide the report. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to do that.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit more about that in our report as well. Uh next up is our standing general committees, uh utilities committee, uh that on the third utilities committee, who's Chair at the time, Councilmember Kunkel.
That would be me. Yeah, so we had uh two subjects on that uh ticket of the day, January third. Uh we uh got a briefing uh from how they go about the utility locating. Uh they, we have a great staff that goes around and does that, make sure that we are clearly and accurately tracking all of our utilities underground. Uh they are the people that show up when you call and make sure that uh you're not gonna hit a line of something when you're digging. And uh have a very uh very good process of keeping track of that for our city. And then the uh stormwater design uh manual update. Uh we just uh got an update on mandates for local stormwater projects and regulatory updates uh to so that we can be in compliance with our stormwater management and so on and so forth. Good meeting.
Great. Now we're on to Boards' mission reports. I'm up first, and uh I'll be reporting out on the Transportation Policy Board, which met uh early morning, seven AM um on January twelfth. Uh first up on our agenda was the discussion of the the meeting schedule um for the year. Um I always bring it up that I can't believe we have a seven AM meeting, so only in a Boards and Commission that I've I've been on that meets that early, but it's been a long standard uh and as council know, I'm not much of a morning person.
You can't get them to change that one, Mayor.
Yeah, every year.
You've been on it for years trying to get that changed. Why can't they change it?
This kid kills me every year. Uh but once again, we're gonna be meeting at seven AM. Um we also appointed uh uh former Mayor Pete Komet to be our emeritus representative to a two-year term. This was a a position that was created several years ago when Doug DeForest, who'd been on Transportation Policy Board for you know, fifteen years, uh was no longer considered like a business representative. Um but so we created a a emeritus position because he had so many years of experience, so we just didn't wanna lose that. Um well, Pete has also spent fifteen years on the Transportation Policy Board, and he qualified for this emeritus position. And uh so even though he retired, um he was eligible for this, and he he approached me as the Chair of the Transportation Policy Board and say, hey, I I would like to do this, and so I recommended him to do that. Um next up is uh this high-capacity transportation study that um was also been funded with with federal funds and and a a last funding cycle. Um there's a subcommittee that's gonna be appointed to look at that, and the the big deal is, as as we all know, at some point, the sounder is gonna make its way down to DuPont. What the big question is, is how do we, what do we do between DuPont and and Thurston County? Um and there's several different ideas out there of what we can do with looking at the corridor and so on and so forth, but we received some federal funding to to look at this issue and and just high capacity. You know, uh in in general, and so uh the other idea is is to look at the corridors down Martin Way, downtown Olympia through, you know, through Tumwater. At some point, that could be a more of a higher capacity transit corridor, but there might be need some study that that goes into that as well, so. Um it looks like there's gonna be uh that, you know, the subcommittees can be appointed from representatives from each of the jurisdictions. Um and there will be some conversation between, I guess, myself and 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 Robin if we want the Transportation Policy Board member to be on that board, or if we want TRPC representative to be on that board, so. Uh Robin, you and I can talk a little bit about that, and uh we'll have to tell uh TRPC which one of us is gonna be that representative. Um then we had uh talked about the election of officers. I'm gonna, it looks like I'm gonna be Chair for an another year, um but that will happen next month. Um there was some opposed amendments to the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, the R T I P, which uh so anytime a new project comes online for funding, they have to be in the R T I P uh for that to go forward, and so there's, every once in a while, you need amendments to the R T I P to put uh a project forward for the for the region, and it looks like it's Olympia that has three paving projects that they're uh preservation projects that they're gonna go forward on that wasn't on the R T I P, so there is a uh motion to do that. Um, and the next up is the sanction and redistribution of the federal funding programs, as Scott just pointed out. Um, and so th- th- this is really good work, not only from the city of Lacey and, uh, we have a project ready to go. But really the entire region, um, it's, as, as we know, it's very hard to spend federal dollars. And you have to spend them in, in a, in, in a certain amount of time. And our region has always really been great. About meeting those deadlines on, on when tho- those dollars have to be spent. Other regions in the state of Washington are not so good. And if you don't meet those deadlines, it goes back into the pot. And other projects that are ready to go, get the next, you know, step at it. And, and they have to be like really ready to go. Because then you, you only have a very short amount of time on those redistributed funds to spend them. And so you, I mean, things have to be. On the way. And, and in Lacey's case, we had this project ready to go. And, uh, Martin Hoppy always does a great job of making applications to the transportation policy board and for approval and. And this, uh, scored very high and, and we were able to get funding for it. So, um. Not only good thanks to Martin Hoppy and the city of Lacey staff, it's, it's great for the entire region. We have spent our dollars. We're. Which allowed us to be eligible for these dollars. And sure enough, more years than not. Recently, these redis- redistributed funds have come back to our region. We've been able to take advantage of them. So, uh, then we had an outgoing, um, recognition of Graham Sacerson, who's been on the board. On and off, uh, for, since the nineteen nineties at the transportation policy board. And he, um. Obviously has a lot going on. He's a, he's a current school board member, um, the Northridge Public Schools. Can't imagine what it's like to be a school board member right now. Um, it's gotta be very, very difficult. And so he has a lot of things going on and he's been a. A long time, um, volunteer within our community. And I know that he's really involved in Lacey Fund Pair. Coming up and has a lot on his plate. And so he decided, you know, he needs to let something go and he decided he wasn't gonna run again for another term. So. Um, we had a, a, a great recognition of Graham Sacerson. And this is continued support, not, you know, for our community. This is something he's been doing for several, several years. He's been the vice chair. Of the transportation policy board for past, I think, three or four years as well. So, um, he will be missed. And then we talked about a, um, a call for projects updates and, uh, talked to this council. Private over the past year about where would, uh, we're now gonna be required to have some sort of a, some performance measures. Into our, when the call of projects go out, um, for, for funding, federal funding. That is something that we know is gonna happen for a while. Um, we've gone through this, what it sends a pro- process of what that's gonna look like, especially with our technical advisory committee. Which Martin Hoppy, of course, sits on and advises. And, um, and so we just got a, an update about what that process is looking like. And, and when that's gonna finally be implemented. And it's gonna have, it's gonna have an effect on our, on our region. You know, up until, up until very, very recently, we've really tried to look at. The, the entire dollar amount that comes to our region and sort of appropriate those dollars even as evenly as possible throughout our. Our region, but that's just not gonna be acceptable from the federal government going forward. Um, so, uh, we've been working on this for a long time and. This has been, yeah, an update on where we're at with that. And so that is my report. Um, the, the first mayor's forum was supposed to happen on the first Friday of the month. Uh, it changes over who's responsible every year, uh, on that. And we're in the, that weird period of like. Um, it changed over to Rainier. So Rainier had to be involved and put out the, the notice. And then quite in time. And, and so, um, apparently they did end up meeting. They weren't, didn't meet right at noon when I, we normally meet. And so I, I end up doing something else, but I heard that fifteen, twenty minutes later, they were able to get the, the code out and they, some, some people did meet. So. Uh, there'll be next month where, um, we get to, uh, have a couple of new mayors. In, in Thurston County will be at the mayor's forum, of course, the mayor of Yell, um, and the mayor of. Pecota, the two new mayors. So, uh, look forward to talking to them, um, in the first Friday in February. And that is my report. Uh, next up is, uh, deputy mayor.
Do you have, um, a TRPC or, well, I'll start at the bottom. Uh, Jazzcom got rescheduled till next, uh, the seventh and then. Thurston Thrises is on the twenty fourth, um, uh, and then LTAC and, and, uh, TCC that you have yet to meet, but. Uh, the TRPC, um, had a, uh, a budget, operating budget come out. Uh, and get approved, um, this month. The, there was, uh, uh, four percent cost of living adjustment for salaries. Um, in the, in the budget. Um, a petition was made for, uh, five, uh, or to seven percent, but. Uh, didn't pass, uh, and part of that was, you know, uh. What, what, uh, someone was calling the, the great resignation. I don't know. We have some HR people here and, and, uh, one of the, the, the things about is, is, you know, retention. Is, is apparently, uh, tough right now in a lot of areas. And so, um, you know, the, the four percent was. Was as high as TRPC was willing to go, uh, because, you know, they have to, to. First of all, get, you know, buy-in from the different jurisdictions to, to even get that far. And so it was no surprise that the five percent, um, didn't make it. Uh, but the four percent did. Uh, there, there was also, um, a transportation priority survey. That was completed. The results, um, weren't published, but, uh, a lot of information about who. Responded and took the survey, um, was presented. And it, it was just a lot of information about, you know, who's. Doing our surveys and, 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 uh, you know, what demographics they are. And so it was, it was actually a lot more information about the demographics of the survey than I had ever seen, um, without actually seeing the results of the survey. So. Uh, I'll give you more on that as, as they, you know, give us more information on the results of that survey. Um, we did, uh, tighten up the TRPC values, uh, that were discussed at the retreat and we did finally decide on, uh. I don't know if I, if, if I, if I mentioned this in, in previous meetings, but, um, there was one part of it, the equity inversion part that, that we just couldn't quite. You know, get the right wording for. And so, uh, we did have a couple of extra meetings in a small subcommittee. Uh, and try to get that tightened up and, and it was, uh, tightened up and accepted, uh, this past, this past meeting. Uh, and, uh, one of the last things was, uh, TRPC actually received a one point five eight million dollar. Sanction and redistributed surface transportation block grant funding, uh, which you guys, I won't, I won't go. Talk about the whole thing because you guys already have discussed the, 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 uh, end result for Lacey, uh, with those funds. Uh, which mean is, you know, again, we're, we're receiving some funds to do a project that has, has been ready to go. And so. Uh, the one point five eight million was, is, is, uh, to be distributed. Uh, there is actually a list, a distribution list that is available. Uh, if you would like to see the list on TRPC website, but, uh, it was, it's a nice surprise for the region and, um. Those dollars will go a long way and they are being distributed to the different cities. And that is my report.
Thank you, councilmember Cox.
Righty. Um, I covered the ORCA, that's the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency. Uh, meeting on January twelfth and they didn't meet in December, so they had two months worth of business to do. I'll try to keep each item as crisp as I can. Um, there had been a proposal to change their. Award system with the commute trip reduction policy from giving tiny amounts of vacation to reward. Employees who, um, do take alternate transportation to work. To switch that to cash awards. And it was decided to stick with. The vacation lead. And this is measured like in minutes. Like you get fifteen minutes of, of vacation lead if you. Take, you know, ride your bike X number of times, for example. Um, just so, you know, for everybody's background, the Washington Clean Air Act requires. Employers with staffs of more than one hundred in the state's nine most populous counties. To participate in the commute trip production program. In, um, clean, looking at regulations that they were cleaning up, uh, there were concerns expressed by the. Washington State Funeral Directors Association, uh, that crematoria were being lumped in with. Incinerators in air quality regulations. Um, so that concern was dealt with. And the rule cleanup proceeded to be adopted. Um, in the good news department, air quality in our area was remarkably good in November and December. Much better than typical. And staff attributes the improvement to a combination of. Um, frigid temperatures, literally lifting, lifting the smoke and, uh, reduced number of wood burning stoves. Um, staff is working to expedite demolition applications for flood damaged structures. And get information out to the people who have to do that because a number of these facilities may well have asbestos. And so. It's information on how to be safe and removing that. They're also doing outreach work with homeless encampments to educate the people living there about. The air pollution that results from burning wood and other materials. Um, Jeff Johnson is, uh, poised to take over as executive director of ORCA. Uh, in February with the retirement of longtime director Fran McNair. Um, and Director McNair announced that the Department of Ecology. EPA and the Department of Natural Resources are working together on burn regulations for urban growth areas. Um, operations that burn more than one hundred tons would have to get approval for the days they can burn. In order to try to even out and re- reduce the collective impact of smoke. Um, on an area. And then the region, we see next up, what Regional Housing Council and Climate. Mitigation Steering Committee both meet next week. And then intercity transit met last night and there are concerns there. The Omicron. Um, variant is hitting the staff really, really hard. And they're having to, um, because of staffing shortages. They produce some service temporarily until they can get people back to work. Um, so the express route called the one that runs along Martin Way and then on out to Capitol Mall. That is suspended temporarily. And, uh, Route thirteen, which had been getting fifteen minute interval service. At its stops is going to, um, have reduced service to every thirty minutes instead. And. These are temporary measures and the staff is working on even more contingency planning in case. This gets worse. Um, just like Lacey's getting money for the roundabout. Um, intercity transit received five hundred thousand, five hundred for the, uh, Patterson Street. Rehabilitation and expansion project. That was, that was great news. And. At our last formal meeting on January sixth, I told you guys about two bus operators who were honored for performing. Life-saving CPR, um, on a man who'd stopped breathing at Capitol Mall. Well, last night, we learned that another driver had prevented a suicide at the Slater Kenny Overpass. Um, the driver, Liata Roberts, observed a woman who appeared, appeared ready to jump. And quickly intervened. And the rescue was actually reported by a witness who saw. Um, Ms. Roberts jumped to, that didn't hesitate to jump in and take action and, um, was just. Amazed and impressed about that. So Ms. Roberts is going to be rec- recognized for her compassion and initiative. Um, and intercity transit was on call and ready to help evacuate people during the floods. Uh, as it turned out, emergency management did find a responder that was closer to the scene of the actual areas. That would need to be evacuated. So it didn't happen. But point is, intercity transit is involved with. Lots of things that you don't necessarily associate with buses. And as I end my term with the transit authority, I just, I want to remind. People who are watching this meeting and my fellow council members, what a treasure we have in intercity transit. I mean, these were significant acts of heroism that should be recognized. But after four years of serving on this. Board, I can tell you that this is an agency filled with everyday heroes. They make our community better in ways that we might never know about because they don't grab headlines, but they're no less important. And that's my report.
Thank you. Next up is councilmember Greenstein.
I have two, uh, relatively short reports tonight. Uh, TCOM nine one one had a town hall meeting yesterday, the nineteenth. The meeting was, uh, in order to let all of the interested parties know what was going on and where we were in the radio system. Project, our chief, deputy chief and commander Mac were all in attendance. So we had, uh, we were well represented here from Lacey. Uh, Keith Lowing, the executive director and several of his staff. Uh, gave the updates and just a couple of highlights, uh, on where we are with the radio system. It is about six months behind the original plan. We've been there for quite a while now. The delay is due to L and I. Um, getting out and inspecting the, um. Some of the equipment that has to be installed, the box, the shelter boxes. And they, they're just, L and I is just behind. So that's running, pushing us back. Uh, the civil work at the actual tower sites is underway. And the subscriber equipment installation and training is underway as well. So we, we are moving along pretty well. Should be fully operational June of twenty-three is the plan. So that, that's moving and I'll keep you updated as we move forward. Uh, EMS, Emergent Medical Service Medic One also met yesterday. And just again, a couple of quick points there. The executive director, Kurt, uh, Harden, is temporarily serving as our public health director for Thurston County. Um, and because he is taking that role, he can't do both. So his assistant, uh, his, his number two. Uh, Ben Miller Todd will be the acting director for EMS. Um. Kurt has made it clear that he's not interested in taking the position. He's only doing it on an interim basis. He's hoping it's three months. Uh, most people think it will be longer than that to replace Shelley, um, you know, who left for another position. So likely to take more like, probably closer to six months. Is the expectation. Um, we did appoint committees at that meeting yesterday. Uh, both the nominations committee for selecting the next chair and deputy chair and a committee for ALS. Contract negotiations. ALS is advanced life support. That is the paramedic service that we all, you know, that is what medic one is known for. And we are going into contract negotiations and I'll be sitting on that contract negotiation committee. And then the last thing was, uh, and this was just kind of pretty cool, I thought. Olympic Ambulance, which is part of our BLS service, the basic life support. Um, private ambulance company has started a, a paid internship program for EMTs. Uh, because there, there's a huge shortage of EMTs locally, statewide and even nationally. It is. Uh, to a, a point of critical shortage. They're finding it very difficult to recruit EMTs. Uh, part of the reason is. They're out of work for two to three months during the training process and not getting paid. And there haven't been in the past paid programs. So they're actually doing a paid internship program where they'll work full-time at Olympic Ambulance. And on the clock be doing all of their training and all of the pay, you know, the schoolwork and all of that, but all of it'll be done on the clock. So they'll be paid full-time wages. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifty thousand dollars a year while they're in the, in the program. So pretty cool. They had over two hundred applicants in like the first couple hours when they announced it. So it, it should be pretty easy positions to fill, I think. Uh, as long as they find the right people. So, and that is my report.
Thank you, Councilor Stedman.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, Community Action Council meets next week and, um. Uh, Thurston County Law and Justice was canceled this week, but I did want to take a point of, um, personal preference, if I may. And address the, uh, elephants in the room. Uh, many people know my, uh, sister passed away just before Christmas. And then just the day after our last council meeting, my brother passed away. Um, huge out. Porous, uh, uh, outpour support from the community, friends and family. All you council. Um huge outpourers uh uh outpour support from the community, friends and family, all you council members. Um it it definitely made a difference. Um you know, kick the jump started the healing process, all that. Um but I just wanted to say thank you. Um life's challenging, hard enough as it is. But it's uh way easier with the friends and family and and neighbors and a community care. So. Thank you so much. That's what Lacey's known for and uh so pat on the back for our community. Other than that, thanks and uh. Uh I wish you guys had had met him and if you if you have, then you know what the loss it was, but um again, thank you.
And you know, you've had a tough time, buddy. You know, my heart goes out to you and it's uh it's been hard, you know, feel it with on with you. So. Um you know, we're here for you. We know it's been just a very, very difficult year, so. Um next up is Councilmember Kunkel.
Again, my condolences, Stedman. Very sad. I just have one quick report uh for the visitor convention bureau. Uh we met last Tuesday. Uh briefly covered our financials and uh we're in the process of looking at our committee committees and we might be restructuring them. Uh with the new leadership, we have a uh much, we have a very dynamic CEO. Uh so we're working on that and we had a working lunch to cover uh the CEO's uh destination development plan. Uh there's a lot of little intricacies that we're looking at and that would take probably all night for me to tell you every little detail. So I'm gonna leave it short. Thank you.
Well, with that, uh we reached our end of agenda, but um not used to these late meetings like we had in the past, but.
Did Robin have anything to report?
Yeah, Robin, I I don't think you have anything to report, do you?
I don't have any committee assignments officially until tonight, so next time.
Exactly.
But I will say she listened in at ORCA and at InterCity Transit last night, so she is on the job.
And at TRPC last Friday.
And at TRPC. There we go.
Uh that's great. That's good news. Uh uh I'm looking forward to hearing your reports out on those committees. Uh we've reached the end of our agenda, so without, I'll call this meeting adjourned and as always, keep it classy, Lacey. See you next time.